Oh, wait. She's wearing it to one of your parties.
Okay, everyone, I think we can get started. Opening session. So I want to start with a couple of updates. First, unfortunately, trustee Martine can't join us tonight because of an employment engagement. So she won't be able to preside. I'll be presiding over board meeting tonight. Also wanted to share good news. We have an update on the students found safe. We are very relieved to share that San Rafael High School student Elizabeth Doorman has been found and is safe. We have confirmed this news with Marin County Sheriff's Department overseeing the case. That's all the information we are available to share. Thanks for all the outpouring of concern and support. So thank you very much. Also want to share, you know, welcome everyone to the meeting and also share that translation is available. I want everyone to know that. And at this point, we can do the pledge of allegiance and Mo is going to be the somebody.
Yes. Turn towards the flag as you are able to and on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, y'all.
Good job. So we don't have anything to report out from closed session. Now I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda. So request for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I second.
Motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, sorry, motion approved comes after everyone's advice. Oh, and then, okay, so moving on to item seven, we have oath of office administration for a student board member representing Venetia Valley. So very excited to introduce our two board members Samantha Gomajo. You can come on up. And we will swear you in. So just raise your right hand. And after I say this, you can, you can agree or not. That would be awkward, but no, no. You solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California. Take that, you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter. Welcome. Bear with me, I'm just reading through here. Okay, now we can start with our announcements. Tonight, we'll start with our student board members and then we'll move over to our labor unions and then for the board updates. So Samantha, we're going to put you on the spot. And if you want to share any updates from Venetia Valley, we'd love to hear what's going on.
Oh, no, you can share from your seat unless you feel more comfortable at the podium, go for it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sammy Gomajo and I'm a seventh grader at Venetia Valley. I'm really excited to be serving as the student board representative for Venetia Valley this year. There's a lot of great energy at our school right now. We're focusing on improving our attendance and making sure every day counts. Our girls athletic teams have been doing amazing in their competitions. And our middle school students are showing tons of school spirits this week during spirit week. I'm looking forward to sharing more updates and highlights from Venetia Valley as the year goes on. Thank you for letting me represent our Falcon community.
Thank you very much and welcome. Trustee Zaino.
Hi, everybody. We're having a great evening. My first update for tonight is our Club Rush event is tomorrow. There are going to be thirty-four student represented clubs. Students will be able to explore and learn about a wide variety of these clubs through games, food, and other various sign up activities that are at each table. My next update is each month, our math teacher, Dr. Foster, posts a math problem of the month for students and staff. Those who answer the question correctly get a chance to put their name in to win a Chipotle gift card. And I brought some if you guys want to test your math skills.
Are we eligible for the Chipotle gift card? Oh, we are. Okay, great.
I just hope you brought the Chipotle gift.
Now, do we submit the answers to you, trustee Zina? Okay, got it.
But I could give it to her too.
Okay, great.
My next update is last Friday, we held our fourth ever Hispanic Heritage Night. At the event, there was a bunch of food, fun activities, families, and a ton of dancing. The turnout was really good at the event, which was wonderful because this event really ties our Terralinda community together. And finally, my night, my final update for tonight is United Against Hate Week will take place from the twentieth to twenty-fourth. ASB is planning several activities to promote unity and inclusion. Clubs will also participate in an Instagram takeover, sharing messages that celebrate diversity and kindness. And ASB will also create a banner and a pledge poster in the student comments for everyone to get to sign. And clubs are also invited to come by this poster during brunch for an opportunity to feature their club on our social media. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your update. Trustee Gomajo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to share some exciting updates. Starting off, we kicked off our homecoming festivities with a bright, well-attended parade that brought many staff, students, and families and community members all together. Following the parade, our, our varsity football team delivered an outstanding performance against Helmsburg High School, scoring a massive fifty-two to twenty-one victory. The energy and support from the crowd was amazing. As well, this past Friday, Latinos Niles Club hosted a successful Noche Cultura event to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. The evening consisted of a variety of traditional food vendors, interactive games, activities, a live band, and a visit from our event popular Kona Ice Truck. As well, our varsity girls' football team has had an outstanding season with twenty-two victories. Monday, just yesterday, our teachers had an afternoon where they worked on new AI tools, which was ensuring how students can use AI, but also stay off AI and continue their learning, continue their learning at a high level. Our ASB class has also been working on a Halloween spirit week as well, planning a winter community event. More details to come. I'm proud to hear that Elizabeth Doorman has now been found since she had been missing since September. Thank you for all the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Gomajo.
Hi, on behalf of Madrone, I'm happy to say that everything has been going smooth at Madrone currently. Nothing, nothing I can argue about. We recently had an off-ground campus lunch for the first time, just to try it out and everything. And all of our students came back responsibly, came back on time, nobody was late. Thank God. And recently, we had a wellness one-on-one check-in as a kind of, just kind of like find out where to go if you need anything, need to check in with our therapist at Madrone. If we need more action, there's a therapist at SR and then all, all the other steps after that. And lastly, speaking of Noche de Cultura, I would like to say it was very fun being at both events as a performer, actually. With, with my dance team, we were at both events, I'd say. Very fun, two events, very fun, very fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your. Now we can move on to.
The labor party.
Yeah, labor parties.
Perhaps we want to go online first. So I believe Karen Moncaio is with SR, oh, sorry, CSEA. So Karen, you should be able in a moment to turn on your audio and video and then you can begin. Give it a moment. She, Karen, you should now be able to unmute yourself and start your video if you choose.
Got it.
Have a good evening, trustees. Thank you so much for your.
Diaz Gazelles, school board trustees, cabinet members, and community members. My name is Karen Moncaio and I'm reporting out for CSEA tonight. I serve as the elementary site rep coordinator for CSEA. We understand that filling a board vacancy, whether it is through appointment or election, is a significant responsibility. It's not just about filling the position. It's about choosing someone who will help guide the direction of the district and advocate for the needs of all the students, staff, and the families. As classified staff, we often represent the unseen but essential foundation of our school system. And we're an important stakeholder in the district alongside our fellow unions, SRTA and SRFT. Because of that, we care deeply about who's chosen to represent our district's values and make decisions that affect our work, the students, and the community. We want to express appreciation in advance for what we hope will be a thoughtful, transparent, and collaborative process and one that invites input from across the district, including from all three labor unions. We look forward to the opportunity to help identify a trustee who understands and values the contributions of every employee group and most importantly, someone who is committed to equity, student success, and strong working relationships with the labor unions and staff at every level. CSEA is hopeful that the process ahead will reflect the same care and dedication that we as classified employees bring to our work every day. Thank you for your time and your service and your commitment to collaborative leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we have Morgan Agnew on Zoom for SRFT. Morgan, you can begin.
Hello again.
Hello.
We, as a district, once again find ourselves in the unenviable position of needing to recruit another board member outside of a regular election. While this is not optimal, in this case, it also couldn't be helped, at least not by anyone in that room. So here we are. SRFT would like to take this opportunity to invite and encourage all those who may be considering applying for this open seat to reach out to us formally if you seek our recommendation or informally if you are still unsure about whether or not you want to throw your hat in the ring and are interested in our perspective. To this board, we have three requests. First, as we strongly suspect you would do regardless, we encourage the board to appoint someone rather than calling for a special election for the very simple reason that we can't afford one. Second, as you have done in the past, please continue to involve us in the process. And remember that we, myself, Brianna, and Tanya are the duly elected representatives of your employees. When we share our perspective, that is based not on how we personally feel, but the collective wisdom of your entire staff. Just try to imagine seven hundred people behind us nodding the whole time we're speaking. Third, we encourage the board to carefully consider to what degree you are comfortable receiving applications written by ChatGPT. Personally, I am not even remotely interested in what AI has to say in response to the application questions. Although I do respect that using AI for editing purposes is so common, it's even becoming best practice in some disciplines. That said, we do teach our students that the use of unsighted, uncredited AI writing is plagiarism, an argument that will become very hard to make if we see a board trustee whose application was written by AI without proper citation. So whatever you decide regarding the use of generative AI on board applications, that should be transparently communicated to the applicants. And, and this is important, applications should be accepted only as editable text files that can be run through generative AI detection tools, not as image files. Some applicants have done in the past. If you decide, as we would suggest, to require applicants to disclose when they have used generative AI in their responses and an applicant fails to do so, that is likely not someone we weren't representing our school community. Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you.
And then I believe we have Kelly Whelan in the room for SRTA.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Diaz Gazelles. My name is Kelly Whelan, fourth grade teacher at Coleman Elementary and Santa Fe Teacher Association bargaining chair, representing our SRTA members from grade TK and early intervention or intervention through eighth grade. Joining me are Sarah Cushman and Renee Romer, two members of our bargaining team. First and foremost, SRTA would like to express our thanks and appreciation for the safe return of the Santa Fe City School student. We're so happy to hear that she has been located. This evening, our sunshine letter is on the agenda to open this year's SRTA negotiations for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven collective bargaining agreement reopeners. Over the last month or so, SRTA members shared their input for what they would like to see bargained this year. Our members indicated a wide variety of suggestions and feedback for articles across the collective bargaining agreement. From that, the SRTA bargaining team and SRTA president Brianna Padilla categorized and discussed the membership's priorities, distilling it down to our top two articles. Article three, work here in hours, and article four, assignments and transfer procedures. Article two, compensation, is an automatic reopener every year. And article nine, the system of professional growth, and article seventeen, peer assistance and review or PAR program, are both opened by mutual agreement with the district leadership. So we will be engaging in work across those articles this year. We look forward to working with our district counterparts to find areas in which we can make progress for our educators, even in the current budget climate. From last year's negotiation agreements and a memorandum of understanding, the Venetia Valley Middle School Seven Period Schedule Committee convened over the month of September each week, leading to the Venetia Valley Middle School SRTA membership vote for a traditional seven-period schedule last week. This schedule will begin at the start of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year. The VV Middle School Seven Period Schedule Committee process involved a series of meetings to evaluate various schedule options, beginning with reviewing sample schedules and gathering initial staff feedback on key areas like instructional time and student experience. Through these discussions, the committee narrowed down the options, first by eliminating the three-day rotating block and then the two-day block with skinny advisory, leaving the traditional seven-period and a two-day block schedule for the final consideration of the vote. The final phase included clarifying long-term implications, addressing staff feedback, and making instructional minute adjustments while developing informational one-pagers for the two final proposals. The SRTA members at Venetia Valley Middle School voted between October sixth and October eighth, ultimately determining the seven-period traditional schedule with seven daily class periods of forty-seven minutes and thirty-one minutes on Wednesdays. SRTA looks forward to the next phase of planning and preparing for the schedule change in collaboration with site and district leadership so that students and staff are set up for success. Lastly, this week is conference week for our elementary and Venetia Valley middle school sites. These educators are enjoying the opportunity to connect with families, share student success, and form goals for the year. Yesterday, all our middle school educators from Davidson and Venetia Valley participated in all-day professional development led by instructional coaches around collaborating, scoring on standards-based assessments, calibrating, scoring. Not collaborating, calibrating. Calibrating, scoring on, I almost, so close. On standards-based assessments, common formative assessment design and implementation, and refining instructional plans to include integrated English language development across content areas. This concludes the SRTA report for this evening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, team.
All right, now we can move over to the trustee updates. Trustee Lau.
All right, thank you. Vice President Korn Kerner. I just have one thing that I would like to share with the board. Last week, October eighth, I attended the kickoff meeting of the Efficiency and Effectiveness Collaborative as long as the E2. The purpose of the E2 is to promote school district collaboration with one another to improve efficiency and effectiveness in terms of the educational offerings, administrative operations, and other school activities in Marin County. So we meet, a meeting, we meet quarterly, so Wednesday from seven-thirty to eight, eight-thirty AM. So this last meeting, we, one of the main agenda items was the middle school athletic programs. Historically, some of the travel sport, for example, could be expensive and not necessarily affordable for all. So the Marin County MCOE had taken the lead to provide proposals. So during the meeting, the E2 members were provided with an overview of the county-wise program that's being considered for development. So I know that our school district was also consulted and is part of the conversation. So we're looking forward to the next step. The students who participate in this program will not have to pay for any fee. It will be covered by the initiator. But of course, the district will still be responsible for some of those fee as well. So that's our first meeting. So we have, the next meeting is on November twelfth. So if there's any update or any news, I will share with our field board members. So let's conclude my update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Um, well, it's, it's wild to be like, oh, I'm going to give updates about September when it's now October. But on September twenty-four, I'm a member of our Culture Equity and Belonging Committee meeting that is led by our Student Services Director Susan Akram. But it's great because this is another opportunity for community members, students, parents, educators to participate as we shape a plan to incorporate culture, equity, and belonging, not as an extra, but into the, the work that we do, especially in alignment with our upcoming strategic plan work. So if, we are still always in recruitment, not only of this culture and equity belonging committee, but the other spaces and places like D-LAC, the Budget Advisory Committee. That's so exciting, isn't it? We would love community input, preferably in person, so we can see your bright shiny faces. On that same evening, the Marin County Youth Commission held their alumni panel. And I just really wanted to highlight this because this is another space and place of San Rafael City School leadership from our various high school and middle school students. That these students participate in the Marin County Youth Commission as a youth advisory board, ages twelve to twenty-four, for our Marin County Board of Supervisors. So it's another space and place for civic engagement and youth voice. Through these areas of like alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, mental health, student wellness, a lot of the things that we talk about as a board, student trustees, and just in general on our school campuses. So that's really exciting because they do the work of policy change. So I had an opportunity to participate because I was an alum many years ago. I'm not going to tell you how many years ago. So it's great to have a full circle, right, other opportunities even after they serve to be student trustees or run for office themselves. But I really want to highlight the superintendent on the move. Pro, I don't want to say program. This is just a really great visibility event and community building event with each of our twelve schools. So this month, I had the opportunity to visit San Pedro Elementary with our superintendent. This is open to all of our board members as well. But it was just great to be able to not just do a flyby in a classroom, to actually sit, connect, ask questions. And the best part is going back to the centering of the student voice piece. Some schools have their student councils already elected, some don't. Yeah, San Pedro didn't have their student elections yet. So they were kind enough to gather fourth and fifth graders representing their classes to be able, and I won't take this away from superintendent, but like two essential questions. And we're asking those questions on each of the, on the move and to incorporate their student voice in the upcoming strategic plan work, budget advisory work, or whatever the draw is to make sure that that feedback lives in other spaces and places as well. So that is my report. And, oh, just a reminder, it's cold and flu season, y'all. So if you haven't had your COVID booster, if you haven't had your flu shot, please do it. I did it on Friday and boy, do I feel like crap. But in a good and healthy way. End of report.
Just a quick update. Last meeting, we had a nice sizzle reel on all the facility projects that had been finished. And that was great to see. But since then, we had more reels sent out to us of the projects in progress, which are, I find like they're much, there are a lot of them are very big and so very exciting to see. So if you haven't seen those, I recommend. Tim, are they on the website?
They are.
Eric, yeah, so good. Yeah, if you'd like to see, go to the website and check it out. I also had the chance to drive by some of the facilities and see like for some of the gates that are up now at the, behind San Rafael High School. It's great to see that kind of option to have it closed off now. So just great to see that, that moving forward and, and all of the great facilities that are, are coming up. With that, I won't delay longer. I'll pass on to Superintendent Gazelles and let her give her update.
Well, yes, we had a great time at San Pedro. I will be at Laurel Dell next Wednesday and looking to talk to our students and our great student voice. Taking all that and using it to discuss at our strategic plan refresh meetings. And our very first one is tomorrow night. So we're very excited about that. And I want to thank all of our elementary school district teachers. I remember the days of parent conferences. It's a lot of work and a lot of preparation. So thank you for what you're doing. And thank you to Venetia Valley team for coming to a very, very long, long decision. But they did it so thoughtfully and so collaboratively. So we're really excited about the next steps. And that's it. That's all I have for, for my update.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to public comments on non-aggendized items. I didn't receive any slips. I don't think we have anything in the room.
We have any online?
Those on, those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if they wish to give a public comment. I'll, I'll give it a moment. Looks like at this time, we have one public comment. So this is Jake S. Jake, if you would like to unmute yourself, you can give a public comment to the Board of Education.
My name, my name is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature to give a public comment. Would you like to return to the, to Jake for the public comment? It's, the hand is down, so I think you can close public comment.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move on from public comment to discussion and action session. Our first item is board business for decision regarding the board vacancy. So on October seventh, Isaiah wrote us, admitted his resignation from his position. from his position as a member of the San Rafael City School Board of Education effective immediately. So at today's meeting, the board will decide the next steps regarding the process to fill the open board seat vacant by Mr. Rota. Board Policy nine-two-two-three Exhibit A sets forth the guidelines for filling a vacancy on the governing board. Within sixty days of the vacancy, the board must either order an election to fill the vacancy or make provisional appointments to fill the vacancy. SRCS Board Policy complies with the state guidelines for filing such a vacancy. Mr. Rota was elected to a four-year term in 2024 to represent trustee Area Five. Whether the board conducts a provisional appointment process or orders a special election, the following applies. And I think Christina, you're gonna pull up a map now. Okay, so anyone who fills the seat must reside in this area, which is Area Five. Regarding the term timeline, given there are three remaining years on Mr. Rota's seat and the Board of Education election in the interim, the term length will be as follows. The individual would serve approximately a one-year term that is up for election in November twenty-twenty-six. The next regularly scheduled SRCS Board of Election, Education Election. The appointee may or may not choose to run in November twenty-twenty-six election. The election in November twenty-twenty-six is for a two-year term that is up for election in November twenty-twenty-eight. So beginning in November twenty-twenty-eight, the seat will return to a regular four-year term. In accordance with the board policy, this evening, the board is to act to direct staff to begin a provisional appointment process or to order an election to fill the vacancy. If the board should choose to use a provisional appointment process, the following timeline is proposed to meet the sixty-day timeline. So October fifteenth, the staff advertises the vacancy, so that's tomorrow, and application using a range of communication tools, including school, district newsletters, staff announcements, social media, parent leader groups, community partnerships, local media, and the district website. The application will include five questions for written response. Then we go to November fourteenth, the application close at four P.M. On November seventeenth, the applications include the board backup for the special meeting, board agents' agendas posted. November eighteenth at four P.M., a special board meeting for board candidate interviews, deliberation, and appointment. A new board member is sworn in during regular board meeting, participates in the meeting. December fifth, required to complete the process. So I don't know what December fifth, if that's just paperwork or?
Yes.
Okay. During the entire application period, the superintendent is available to meet candidates to discuss the role and the responsibilities of a board member. If there are no qualified applicants received by the deadline of November fourteenth, district staff would extend the application process and likely hold a special meeting the week of December first, the week after Thanksgiving. By being mindful of the December fifth deadline. So if the board were to order an election for Area Five, it would cost between twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred per the county of Marin election department estimates. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions. Do I ask the trustees first, or is this open also to?
Trustees, then we can ask the public.
Okay. So trustee Lau, trustee DeNava Marsh, any questions?
No.
Clearing up.
Okay. And then we can open also any questions from the audience. I see.
Sorry, can I just, can you do the numbers again for the cost of the election?
Yeah, so it's between twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars to thirty-seven thousand one hundred. So they're down to the hundreds of dollars on this, so fairly exact. Yeah, that's, that's if we go to special election.
And those numbers, Kelly, are based on registered voters in Area Five?
In Area Five.
Some areas have more registered voters, so it'd be more expensive to run an election.
I understand.
Perhaps we want to go to Zoom. If there are any questions or comments on Zoom, they can use the raise hand feature.
I do have one quick question. If we have possible candidates who are interested in applying, but they'd like to request our application in another language, for example, Spanish, is that possible?
Oh, um, that's a good question. I would, we'd have to look into that one, trustee Marsh, because I'm not really sure. I'm assuming that we could, but would that also mean translations for board meetings and things like that? So yes, let me look into that, but very open to that.
In, in, the reasoning behind my question is because when I think about the, especially with our framing of equity and the fact that we've actually removed in our practice as a board to remove the five-day request of interpretation for online and in-person, it would just align with our values that if there was a candidate that felt more comfortable with Spanish to do the same, especially since we're already providing interpretation as a service. That was my reasoning for this question.
And that's a good question. We would just have to, if there's any Brown Act, any bylaws that we would have to research for that, I'm not sure. But of course, we'd definitely be open to that.
Thank you.
Let me just do some homework.
And so at this point, are we making the, after, if there are no more discussions, make the decision to?
Either.
Was there somebody online? Sorry, I cut them, I cut you off.
That's okay. I'm seeing no hands raised, but again, I can ask if there's any public comment online or any questions online to use the raise hand feature. I'll give it a moment. Same then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so at this point, we can ask, you can ask more questions. We've had them. But it's really to make a decision on whether we want to go through the appointment process or special election. So I don't know if you need any more time to think about it or talk about it.
So if I, if I understand correctly, so the appointment, if we were to appoint, it's gonna go through November twenty-six. And the candidate, whether or not you want to reapply or to be, to run for the seat, is only good for two years at that time, right?
Right, because of the midterm.
Term, okay. Okay, good.
And then after that, after twenty, yeah, then it goes back to the four-year.
Okay.
I do have a question for the board, for your consideration. Regarding Morgan's request about screening for AI use in an application, how do you feel about that? Should we screen? Should we ask for online versions? Some board members may even want to drop off a handwritten, which is a moot point, but how do you feel about that?
Well, I think he brings up a good point where you don't want it to just spit out, like, you put in two or three words or just plug the question in and have an answer for you. So I don't particularly have a problem with editing with AI or like some. And then you get into a range of AI, right? Is it grammarly, which is just correcting minor mistakes? Or is this actually structuring answers for you? It's, I don't know what the screening tools he has already for it or what we might have. But I think what you'd want to screen for is if it was just like a completely created by AI versus, oh, I've, I have, I've read, I've written this out and I want to restructure it or reframe it or check, check the grammar and make sure that it's articulating what I want. Because at the end of the day, what you want from the person is, is this piece of language here, what represents me, or their thoughts, that person? So however we do that, like, that's not a great answer. It's exactly how you do it. But that, it's, what represents the person is going to be most important from that piece of text that shows up to me.
Trustee Marsh, trustee Lau.
Is there an existing process in general? Like, I think about when I apply for jobs, they, now I'm seeing the screener where it says, "Check a box if you actually used AI to edit your supplemental questions." So if there's an existing practice, I wouldn't mind beta testing it for this. But I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm open. That doesn't also answer your question. Sorry. We are doing open discussion. This is civic engagement, everybody.
What we can do is ask for a online copy version, and then we can find out a way to just screen it. I mean, trustee Lau, any thoughts?
Well, I, I guess, well, I would defer to the district, to the district policy and the general council. I guess, whatever the, the, the regulation and the law requirement or allow.
Gotcha.
I don't know, I wanna put anything, you know, criteria, is anything beyond that? But at the same time, it's not like a test that, you know, just based on the application. I think the person, if I remember fully, I was in that seat just six months ago. We have to come here for the interview.
Interviews are very key points.
Yeah, that's probably, so we're not solely based on the application, but it really, in-person interview, the interaction amount with the trustee. So, so I'm not too concerned about, to be honest. But I, I respect whatever the majority of the decision.
Yeah, it's, there's, it's, it's a tricky thing because if, for instance, if I had an editor or if I had an assistant and I've written something and I wanted to look great, I might give it to my editing assistant and they would go through and make it better, right? And so AI is kind of an equivalent of that, so it's.
Right. And I'm sure if President Martine were here, she would say it's all about the interview. Yeah, we'll look into that and research that and go from there.
And maybe Morgan also has some, some of the screening tools. Like, we can look those up probably pretty quickly too.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you for that info. So, okay, so now I think the time has come, if there's any, no questions from the audience, if you wanna choose between an appointment process or election.
So I'm going to, I'm gonna frame it as those, like, do I have a motion to approve an appointment versus a special election as a way to ask the question? So we can move forward that way.
Yeah, motion to approve an appointment process.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So motion approved. So we will go with an appointment process.
Okay, and we start hosting tomorrow morning.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number two, Educational Services. Approval of Memorandum of Understanding Between State School Ambassadors and Coleman Elementary School for Anti-Bullying Program Services during the twenty-twenty-five and twenty-six school year.
Hey, I'm welcome. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Alex Peck, Principal Coleman Elementary. Or thank you for having me. Nice to see you all, trustees. And Kelly Wayland, you're laughing at me because we threw a hot dog party to Marin's and student volunteers for state school ambassadors for this.
Did you bring us hot dogs?
No, no hot dogs tonight.
Next time.
So I'm bringing forward an MOU and, which is a state school ambassadors program, which is an evidence-based, student-led initiative. And the idea behind this is to empower student leaders and our staff to go ahead and to support an SEL framework that will help students resolve conflict and stop bullying. And so just a quick little overview, you know, this is directly related to a few items within not only our CIPSa, but also within the LCAP itself. So thinking about student success, our focus really is around strengthening student voice, by empowering student leads and efforts, again, to prevent bullying. And then it goes hand in hand with our multi-tiered systems, support, our NTSS systems. So holistically, thinking about our students, we know that social, emotional well-being of our students is kind of, is paramount, and that's one of the components of our multi-tiered systems of support. This is more of a tier-one support, but kind of the brass tacks of it is. This grant is an eight thousand, it awards us eight thousand dollars to have trainers come on campus for two days to go ahead and then to ensure that our, our staff is trained and our students, thirty-five to forty students trained. The only financial impact that's coming from the school site itself will be around substitute teachers to ensure that our three staff members will have a sub that on those two days. And so we're, it is approximately a thousand dollar, a thousand twenty dollars for those subs based upon Monday, Tuesday rates. So I'm recommending, you know, the motion for approval of this. And we're moving, ideally moving forward with an action. Any questions?
Any questions?
How, how the ambassador being, though we couldn't?
Yeah, so great question. We kind of did this in multiple layers. So we have a few different leadership groups. At Coleman, I feel really lucky. It is led by our staff members. So we have a student council. And then we also have what we call Tiger Teams. Our Tiger Teams support students with, you know, anti-bullying, but also conflict resolution when it comes to games. So knowing the rules of the games, helping out on campus. And so this was, we took some of those students within our Tiger Teams. But we also wanted our students in fourth and fifth grade who historically run into challenges, whether that's, you know, playing on the soccer field and they run into some conflicts, but may not have the language to be able to resolve those issues as they come up. So we put out to the teachers, but we also were running off of a list of former recommendations. And then students went ahead and they accepted the invitation after we reviewed at our hot dog party, what to expect and to see if they'd be interested. But they are also gonna have a commitment of once a month, having a lunchtime meeting with staff members to review some of the tactics or tools that they're learning for de-escalation and what to do when there are any challenges.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second? Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you collect the motions on this? All right, item number three, human resources item. So for the elementary school district, Presentation and Approval of the San Rafael Teachers Association Sunshine Articles Proposal for Negotiation Interest for Twenty-Twenty-Six and Twenty-Seven.
Thank you. President McQuarrett, this is a proposal for San Rafael Teachers Association, SRTA. They are proposing two articles along with the compensation and the two mutual agreements that we will be sunshining along with them, Article Nine for Systems of Professional Growth and Article Seventeen for Peer Assistance and Review Programs. So the district is asking and seeking approval of the sunshine articles, which will allow us to begin negotiations.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve? A motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have the next two.
Keep going.
Keep going, yeah.
So the next one is ten point four, the Presentation and Approval of the San Rafael City Elementary School District Sunshine Articles Proposal for Negotiation Interest, Negotiation Interest with San Rafael Teachers Association for the Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven School Year. And the district has an interest in opening Articles Two and Article Four. As compensation, Article Four is Assignments and Transfer Procedures, along with the two mutual agreement articles of nine and seventeen. So the district is seeking approval of the district's sunshine articles so we can begin negotiations with SRTA.
Same. Any questions? No. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, there we go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Darling, I'll let you continue on in five minutes.
Thank you. So our next item is a, an approval of first reading and district is requesting to waive the second reading of revisions for board policy and administrative regulations thirteen-twelve-point-one, Complaints Concerning District Employees. The district is presenting the board policy and administrative regulations thirteen-twelve-point-one as a first reading, with a second. The California School Board Association had issued updated recommendations for both the board policy and the administrative regulations, which are reflective in the attachments. The current board policy thirteen-twelve-point-one has been updated, yet it still holds some of the key components and points when complaints concerning district employees is received, such as anonymous complaints. It provides, providing a process informing the complainant of such process. The process is the complaint. The process is the complaint is against the superintendent, determining whether a complaint should follow this policy and/or other district procedures. If a complaint is received, it shall be investigated. The employee and the complainant have a right to present relevant information during the investigation, prohibiting retaliation from all parties involved. And the district cannot guarantee complainant request for confidentiality if they ask that. And along with the appeal process with final decision by the board. The administrative regulation thirteen, twelve point one details the process. The district follows when a complaint concerning district employees is received to include, um, initial attempt to resolve informally. If unable to resolve informally, the complainant would submit a written complaint, um, which would outline who to file the complaint, dependent upon the position of the employee. So if it was, um, an employee, a regular classified or certificate employee, they would submit to their principal. If it's the principal, they would submit to, um, the superintendent or designate. The district would provide assistance to the complainant if needed and requested. The specifics to be included in the complaint, upon receipt, this administrative regulation includes the timeline that the district is required to follow, along with the process, um, outlines, and then finally outlines what is to be included in the appeal process with the board having, um, final authorization. So we are, um, asking, uh, for approval with, uh, the first reading and the request to waive with the revisions of BP and AR thirteen, twelve point.
Darling, it's my understanding that this was last revised in two thousand and eight, right?
It was. That is correct. The, um, CSBA, which is the California School Board Association, recently updated in two thousand nineteen. So we, that is a part of the reason why we're requesting to waive a second, so we can get our language updated.
Okay. Any questions? I'll request the motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Are you a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Thank you. All right. Now for, this is always fun.
Donation. I know. Come on, Koochie. Turning my chair towards Bob.
I feel like you need to share with other cabinet members. Like you always, you get to take the.
Well, we've got some big generosity tonight, um, that is exciting. And I always love it when what we're seeing more now is recognizing the work of our PTOs, PTAs, where oftentimes those wouldn't come to the board. But tonight, or you know, more and more this year, we're starting to see PTAs and PTOs be recognized. So the first one is, um, actually to the PTA. So we have Andrea Hedden or Hedden is giving three thousand dollars to the Venetia Valley PTA. So no Falcons there. Thank you so much to Ms. Hedden. We have a two hundred fifty dollar, uh, gift for the robotics club at Santa Fall High School from Cynthia Hager. And we have a donation from our PTA at Bahia Vista for field trip transportation of five thousand dollars. So that's a great example of how many of our PTAs support, uh, enhancing our curriculum is through funding field trips. So grand total this evening, eight thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Always amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm motion to accept these donations. I'll motion to approve.
Um, and second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And these gifts are accepted. Oh, yes. Um, this is, yeah, we, we want to pause and ask if anyone, uh, on Zoom still needs, or in the room still needs translation.
I don't think anyone in the room is doing Zoom.
Oh, is that what it's, it's on this.
Use the raised hand feature if they're using translation. No, we're, there's no.
Good. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So now we can move on to the consent, uh, agenda. I want to ask the board if there are any items that you'd like to pull out for discussion.
I have none.
No.
So, um, looking for a motion to approve the consent items.
Uh, motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent items are. All right. Now it's time for staff report. So enrollment update for business services and enrollment for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Mr. Mark Koochie?
Yes, thank you. Um, let's talk about enrollment. Um, Ms. Grino is going to help with the slide. That's great. We are going to just jump right in. That's okay.
I'm trying to get your clicker, so I don't, uh, I don't have to.
We actually are. We're just gonna jump right in. So this is a snapshot of enrollment in early October, October ninth is the day that was just after census day. And this is a snapshot. We're taking you here first to the big board, which gives you a sense of the different schools, how many students at each grade at this point in time, how many classes at each grade, and then some totals along the right. You can see, you know, some of our bigger schools, Bahia Vista at five, twelve. We have Sun Valley at five, twenty-four. Venetia Valley's TK through five is also at five, twelve. So you can see some of our bigger schools, some of our smaller schools, and of course, the Early Learning Center. I, I think, you know, just kind of macro look, we've got three thousand thirty-nine students enrolled TK through five with up one hundred thirty-eight classes. And if you just do the simple math, it's an average class size of about twenty-two, um, students per class. Now, of course, TK has a, um, limit of twenty per class and the fourth and fifth grades can get as large as twenty-eight. Kindergarten through third grade can be up to twenty-five. So looking at a class size average over all grades isn't necessarily tell you the whole story, but in general, it gives you a picture of, of where we're at. Um, and then you can see one other piece. At the very bottom, where it talks about the number of classes at Venetia Valley, you can see the classes in red. There are two dual-language classrooms and two traditional classrooms. And then you can see how that program has been built up currently now in fourth grade with two DLI and, uh, uh, some room for expansion there in fifth grade, um, with that program. So that's been a, a phased in approach. With just looking at sixth through eighth grade enrollment, you can see the totals there for Venetia Valley and Davidson, again, as of October ninth. Two hundred thirty-nine students at Venetia Valley in the middle school program. And remember, add that to the five hundred twelve from the TK through five. So you're in the seven hundred, um, fifty area. And then you have Davidson, um, with one thousand fifty-four. If we look at high school, um, you know, you see Madrone being a program that is in eleventh and twelfth for eleventh and twelfth graders. They currently have forty-nine. That number will fluctuate, uh, throughout the year as students, uh, elect to go there. Um, and then you can see our San Rafael and Terellinda, um, grades. And with a total of, you know, a school, San Rafael being a school of about thirteen hundred and Terellinda being, uh, about a hundred less, twelve hundred. And then our total, um, as of right now, two thousand five hundred sixty-six. I want to spend a little bit of time. This is a slide that shows twenty years, starting in two thousand two, two thousand three, and then going through to the current school year and then some projections up until twenty thirty-two, thirty-three. And I put in some, um, signage there to talk about pressures. But before I talk about that, I want to, I want you to look at this chart, go blue to red to yellow. And the reason that you do that is because you look at, like, if you see that initial, you know, that you see that population grow in the TK through five in the blue, then you can see that sort of show up a little later in six through eight, and then you can see that manifest somewhat in the high school. Um, and that's a, a way to look at this. But right around two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the population of Marin started to decline along with the birth rate. Those often go together. We also can see the pandemic and it, it doesn't look like a huge drop, you know, on this particular graph, but that pandemic was sort of a downward pressure. You can see that drop going from twenty twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two. And then you can start to see it pick back up. And you can, uh, see where the full TK was implemented, um, which would be, you know, this current year. And then you can see some drops related to border policy that are happening now for the foreseeable future. And so the, the, the story here is that the, the district's enrollment does fluctuate, does go up and down. And we're projecting a decline in enrollment, um, going forward in, in both the elementary and the high school districts. There's still, there's always a lot, you know, a change at the border policy can impact our district greatly. I don't think, when we look, when we look at our TK classes right now, we have, uh, I think it was three hundred nine, um, TK. Let's just quickly go back to that. So we have three hundred eight TK students, but if you look at the bottom in K, we have four twenty, first grade, four twenty-one, four sixty-one, four sixty, four fifty-nine, four sixty-eight. So I think there's still room in TK for some growth toward, you know, towards four hundred. But we're, we're not there yet. And so we're, we're having to be a little bit cautious about, how we project out because we're fully implemented. But obviously I think not all of the students that are eligible for TK are, have come to us yet. And so we just have to keep an eye on that. Whoops. Um, yeah, I think that's the, the main piece for that slide. I also just threw this in there too, because it, if you look at the curvature of the population in Marin, it very closely mirrors what's happening with our enrollment. So you can kind of see that ups, uh, that uptick in the two thousand tens and in two thousand fourteen, and then it starts to come down. And if you look at the way, the wave of our graph, it looks pretty similar to that, um, with some other factors involved. So. So this is a look at what's happened from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, but really mainly the difference that we're looking at between October of twenty twenty-four and October of twenty twenty-five. And you can see for TK and K, this is a great, look at the grade spans. For TK and K, you would see an increase of thirty-four, and that makes sense because we've seen some, we've lost some kindergarten students over, over the last six months. But we've gained, you know, a lot of TK students. And so those, you would see a positive increase there. First through third and fourth through fifth are really the areas where we're starting to lose students or where we have lost students. Quite a few. So the, the net of that is, um, a, a a reduction of eighty-one students from this time last year to this time this year. And we know that throughout this year, this num, these numbers will go up and down and they will fluctuate. But this is a good point in time. That's pretty universal. So eighty-one down in the elementary district and in high school, a similar story. You see, um, sort of a steady, you know, a dropping down. Last year we were a little higher than we were this year, but we've, you know, we sort of went up and then came back down to the tune of ninety-three students. And it's like, how, what do, what does that mean? What does that mean for us? And, and, um, I don't know why that other little piece of the slide is, there it goes. I didn't know I had that animated. Um, so if you just really cursory look at this, if you assume thirteen thousand nine hundred eighty-four per student, which was the twenty-four, twenty-five per student, um, revenue, that's a reduction in the elementary district of about a million dollars in terms of how, how much revenue we could generate with the LCFF, local control funding formula calculation. And in the high school district, assuming the fifteen thousand per pupil that was for twenty-four, twenty-five, it's a reduction of a little over a million, one point four, almost one and a half million. But let's talk a little bit more about the high school district. So I wanted to try to help everybody understand how does ADA or average daily attendance, the attendance percentage, the LCFF calculation, the property tax, like how does this, how does this all work together? And so I wanted to just focus on twenty-four, twenty-five because we know, we've talked about the high school district being one of the districts that's sort of on the cusp of is it basic aid, is it not? And so you can see just over the course of twenty-four, twenty-five, these, uh, factors at play. You can see, let's, so let's just start at, at the very top. So we're going from first interim to second interim to budget adoption, what were our estimated actuals using the May property tax projection and then unaudited actuals, um, which is up to June thirtieth, which this board approved back in September. And so you can see our average daily attendance in the high school over the course of the year slowly tick down, um, but and then also that, along the, those lines with the attendance percentage, right? We were at first interim, we were hitting that ninety-five percent mark. At second interim, in February, we were, we had dropped down a point. And then you can see that big swing from January to, uh, when we were adopting the budget in June. And then if you look at our LCFF entitlement, it drops down, um, you know, goes from thirty-eight, thirty-eight point two million to thirty-seven point seven, and it kind of sits there. But, but look at the property tax estimate. So at first interim, we were thirty-seven point six, remained at second interim. And then we saw a slight uptick in May after the, the property tax projection. And then we saw another increase over the summer when they finalized the property tax. And that kicked us over into basic aid at the end of twenty twenty-four by two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. So that's, that's how much on the cusp we are, right? A couple of percentage points in attendance, a higher ADA. You know, property tax growth is relatively stable over time at around four percent. So I feel like this is probably a, a signal that if we think about our enrollment dropping, that's going to decrease the local control funding formula calculation. And we think that potentially property tax revenues may have finally caught up after, you know, really from the pandemic, when the LCFF calculation was, you know, thirteen percent cola, eight percent cola. You saw that calculation go way up and it was outpacing property tax. Enrollment was higher, but now we've got property tax remaining stable, enrollment dropping, which will automatically drop your revenues per student, um, you know, in the calculation. And I think we're going to start to see that property, that excess in property tax number grow slightly over time. So, um, the future status, it really depends on what's our ADA. Supplemental taxes. When you are non-basic aid, you get your base tax and you get some supplemental taxes. And then when you flip over to basic aid, you stop getting the supplemental taxes, which sometimes can flip you right back to non-basic aid. So we're just gonna have, and, and again, a lot of this just creates some noise because we're always going to get the higher of the two. Because we're always going to get the higher of the two. But um, of course, it's better for a, a basic aid district to be deeper into basic aid, right? Because that's just more money per student. Um, so we're just going to have to keep a, an eye on our ADA. Um, and look at the tax growth, um, and, you know, see if, um. See what happens. But my prediction is that we will. Stay in basic aid or, or that we're on our way to continuing in there.
But we're, if we were so at ninety five percent attendance.
We might not be there, yeah.
Then we would be better.
Right. So as our, as our ADA, our attendance percentage gets better. But then also thinking we'll have less students. So it's like ninety five percent of less students might not be enough to. Kick us over the LCFF calculation, right? There's just so many factors at play that it's hard to predict. But I do think our attendance percentage will be better. Will it be better enough compared to the drop in enrollment to keep us? Over the, you know, over that threshold.
Does the state, does the state ever play around with like this system of. Per student dollar amount, like have they, have there been experiments over the years? Different ways to fund schools versus this dollar amount based on attendance for, for them? And are, is there an assessment of. This is still the best thing to be doing?
I mean, to be honest, I think the LCFF calculation was created, um, I want to say fifteen.
So it's been. It's been like this.
That's been the way that they've calculated what schools should get. We could spend, spend time and go much more deeply into. Like ERAF, which is basically. Some part of your property taxes that then get redistributed to other districts. I mean, there's, there's a lot of. Um, mechanisms behind the scene that, um, that are, you know, challenging to explain, to be honest. Um, but there hasn't really been another way. It's either you're either LCFF or if your property taxes are higher than that calculation. You keep the excess.
Have there ever been boom years in the state where suddenly they gave a big up and. Like in the, over that fourteen years of, you know, instead of just a small incremental, like where they gave a big bump and a change per student that they.
I think they do that in the form of those colas, like when we saw a thirteen percent. Cola increase to the calculation. And then the following year was eight. And then on top of that, they were giving us um big block grants. That, you know, were just one time.
One time things. Weather meetings, like there are opportunities for that schools to look at.
Yeah, I mean, just for twenty five, twenty six, even with. The state's fiscal picture, you know, looking similar to districts all around. They still gave um a pretty significant block grant to us, which helps us extend. Some of our COVID activities.
And do we have to go so, ask for those? Like, are there some grants and opportunities that. By going to the state and talking to them, we get access to that otherwise like may, may not show up?
Well, the issue is applying for a grant because once you apply for it, if you qualify, then there are parameters in being able to keep the grant. So. Sometimes it's more work than it's worth. But right now, we're not seeing any, we usually work through the County Office of Education. They're very.
So they're the ones that are spawning, like there are all the opportunities at state level.
There are some grants that they're applying on our behalf for mental health.
Okay.
And then the, these block grants that I'm talking about are just.
Oh, those are just.
They're just given.
It's like we have excess money, we, your district deserves this.
Well, it's like, it's something that all districts would get a certain proportion of, right?
Deputy Superintendent Markucci, um, you may recall that. In the years, um, shortly after COVID, there was some legislation attempts that did not go anywhere to fund schools. Based on enrollment and not ADA.
Yes.
That's right.
And there still seem to be some.
Just meaning like that, how many students, not how much they attended.
Right.
But that was not fruitful.
That would be much better for.
It would, it would be better for us. I think the argument, you know, in the legislature is that, that there would, we would be. Deincentivized to get kids to school.
It's tricky.
I think we all know educators, that's not going to happen, but. But you're right, there was a lot of talk of funding schools on enrollment, not ADA. And I think there's, those talks are ongoing, but they haven't gotten any traction.
Okay, thank you.
Um, to end our enrollment of report, I have some positive things to share, that some slides that were put together by Mike Taylor. Our um after-school coordinator and Pepe Gonzalez, who oversees that program as well. So we have some after-school expanded learning enrollment and we can see. The grade spans there and then how our after-school enrollment has increased, serving more students. Uh, over the last four years, so twenty five, twenty six, we're serving thirteen, uh, thirty one students. And I know that they're continuing to try to increase that all the time. And they're working on, um, you know, I s- I mean, I, everything, every purchase that happens in the district comes across my desk. And so I see some of these things that, these other um programs that they're using. Expanded learning funds to bring in, to enhance these programs and to get kids wanting to stay after school and. Get their homework done and have some fun at the same time. And a lot of great partnerships that is listed here, B, BACR, Bay Area Community Resources and Alliance, the city. YMCA, America Scores, which I know you guys have heard about, and Youth and Arts. Um, and also our summer expanded learning enrollment. Had a, has a, an increase over the prior year and even an increase prior to that. And again, some summer highlights. I mean, who doesn't love a petting zoo? Um, or squishy circuits, whatever that might be. Um, but that sounds like a lot of fun. And I think the more fun we make it, the more students we have that want to spend their summer with us. Pepe, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, um, I think going back to the original enrollment, TK and after-school program has been. Kind of a tandem because as families are deciding to keep their student enrollment, the three-year-old or four-year-old program that goes from. Seven thirty to four thirty five. If they can go into our program and stay until four thirty or five, those decisions weigh. Heavily on how. Mike Taylor's done a great job bringing in more enrichment, more partnerships, the YMCA is another great partner. And Dr. La, you're a big contributor in that. So yeah, better, more enrichment, um, and more. Families and students joining our programs.
Yeah, that's a great point. This, the after-school program offerings and availability. Is a driver of families wanting to come to our schools as well. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And no vote on this.
No, just information and I just share with you where we were at.
How, I'm just, just a quick, quick question. How, just curious, how, how we kind of compare. To our district or Marin County in general, are we all about the same one? Because I know our district is very diverse.
In terms of size or?
Terms of the population projections.
Yeah. Well, I, I think. Just anecdotally talking to other CBOs around the county, we're all in an enrollment decline. As is the state of California. The population decline in California, it's, it's a big factor in. The birth rate decline, but also um our schools, our public schools have had some declining enrollment and. Um, Marin um is no different. So I, I think we're, we're, I think we've been held harmless to some degree. With. The fact that our district has embraced TK where other districts in the county um haven't, you know, haven't moved as quickly as we have. So we've been able to infuse our district with TK students and we have had a steady. You know, group of newcomers that come to our district that has helped our enrollment. And now we're starting to see without those families, um, you know, coming to, to San Rafael and into our district. We're starting to see the impacts of that. So I think other districts have seen some decline. In the last several years more than we have, um, and we're starting to see it now.
The, the, in the, in the recent year, and, and you see a lot of these affordable housing. Building high density housing that being built, how, how are those factored in? Like. Do we project those increase in some way or is it going to bring in a positive more impact? Cause like downtown San Rafael and keep building all this huge, you know, or. High-rise affordable housing would, would those help or, or show in any of these projections?
They, they probably aren't baked into these projections, uh, and I think there's some work to be done there. Um, we do look at each of the developments and try to project. I mean, we did have a developer study. Done um a couple of years ago, so we do look at that. I, I often refer to that when I'm looking at student generation rates. So if you have a building that's, you know, a hundred twenty five units. Um, there's a sort of a factor that you can apply to those a hundred twenty five units to try to determine and predict how many students it might generate. Um, it's, that usually it's a factor of, you know, it's like some fraction times a hundred twenty five that. But it's, I think it's really hard to predict. I've heard a lot of people talk about how. You build this new affordable housing and it often ends up housing the same families that you had in your district. Prior or, um, or there's other factors that make it, that make some developments. Less for families and more for, you know, maybe um older folks like that. So it's, it's hard to. Really nail it down, but we do look at that and, and think about it. And they also impact us with developer fees. Um, we got two checks just this week from two developments that were in the hundreds of thousands. That we can then use to improve our facilities and, and so.
Cause, cause not to mention North Gate, you know, is a big kind of development coming, but it's down the road, it's take time, right?
Right, right.
But that, that I'm wondering if.
Yeah, it feels like it's almost like five years before they're going to begin.
And it'll be phased in, so it's, it isn't like fif- till fifteen or twenty years before it would be full.
Okay.
Built. And that would only impact our high school district, so.
But to clarify, those checks that you receive from the developers that can only be allocated towards facilities?
Right. Yeah. To uh build to expenditures that are connected to. The shifts that a district would have to make to accommodate the students that the development is generating.
Got it.
Right?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty eighth.